10th 2025 Study Session Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Loretoy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
All right. All right. This meeting sets the agenda that will take for the 2011 regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 24th, and hopefully some better weather, where tonight's meeting will be official or where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that we are missing three members of council, but we do have a quorum. So, moving on to audience communication, we've set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Martin, name and address. You've got three minutes.
Yes, Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. And what I'd like to talk about is changing some of the time, okay? This is a booklet that many of you might be familiar with. It's the Handbook for Municipal Officials. And I think it's something that's required, okay, when you first, it's like when you become a judge, you go to actually go to classes in Lansing. One of them on here.
I can't see that.
Okay.
I'm just messing. Listen, the one time I could tell.
I was gonna say.
Listen, your time is on pause.
But, okay. It's the length of presentation, okay? Any person who addresses the council during a council meeting or public hearing shall be limited to, and then there's a blank. You can fill in the minutes, okay? In length per individual presentation, here's the important, one of the important parts here. The clerk maintains the official time and notifies the speakers when their time is up, okay? I hate to take, I hate to take the job away from young Mr. Donavick here, okay? But I'd like to have three minutes. Think about having three minutes for audience communication along with three minutes for an item on the agenda. So you'd be going from two minutes on the item on the agenda to three minutes, okay? Easier for people to remember, maybe some of you to remember also, but I would like to have that, and unless you've altered these rules, which I don't think anyone has done, then these rules are in effect, okay? But I would, and it would make sense, if, let's pretend that somebody doesn't like somebody who's speaking, they can cut that time to less than two minutes or less than three minutes if they desire to. So I really think an independent person is why this rulebook was set up, where the clerk, who also takes the roll call, also takes the vote, would make sense that she takes the time, okay? And I do believe that that's something that would be easy for a lawyer to do, and it's not demanding. So that's one of my thoughts on that, okay?
No, thank you, Mr. Martin. Just for that, Mr. Fisher, do we, with these, with those type of rules, those are just governed by the council office, right?
No.
Are they, they're not charged?
Those rules are governed by, are covered by ordinance, in fact.
They are.
Yes, there are, there is an ordinance that covers the procedure for all council meetings.
So if we ever wanted to make any adjustments or anything, we just have to amend?
It would require an ordinance amendment.
Okay. No, it's just good to know. So basically, with that, Mr. Martin, that is usually kind of probably a guide that, the MML, but I'm taking those in, I'm just gonna review everything, and I'll take that into consideration along with council.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Mr. Martin has 48 seconds left.
But we do have, we do have a clock, I can tell you right now.
And Mr. Donavick.
That I just have to find, I gotta find the remote.
As you're aware, some of you, I'm a big believer in free speech, and it's what makes the country different from.
Absolutely.
Many others, so I like that to be free.
In this room, you will have free speech.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Yep.
Anything else for audience communication?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna race, lose your quarrel.
Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I just wanna talk a little bit about strip mall parking lots and the condition of many of them. I think it's long past time the city started really, really stepping up the enforcement of the conditions of those lots. There's a, there's one off Middle Belt and between five and six. The storm drain has dropped, so it's unsafe, you know, your tire can fall in there, so they put a cone to alert the people coming in out of the parking lot. Well, the cone's been there so long, it's no longer orange. It's, it's over a year. And there's potholes so big, when you go in there, it'll hit your axle. And this is, this is just one, and drive through the city, that these parking lots are horrible. And it's, it's up to the ordinance department to, to, you know, get on the stick. The other thing, I don't, I don't know if you're talking about sidewalk replacements, I thought I saw something about that. But typically in the summer, they walk around, they mark all the bad flags, a square of concrete's called a flag, in a sidewalk. And it would behoove the, whoever does that, DPW, to actually make that trek in the winter, because the dangerous slabs are not the old ones, and even the cracked ones, they're the ones that hold water. So there are so many sidewalks, I've seen them replaced, and they're four inches below grade, and the weather we have, that's very dangerous. You got ice, and then the snow covers the ice, so I just thought it might, it might be a different procedure to walk, walk through the neighborhoods in the winter. Last thing I wanna talk about is the magic words, budgeted funds. We get, you have these agendas for every meeting, and it doesn't matter what, what is written down, what is asked for, the magic words are budgeted funds. And when those two words are attached to any request, all that means is the money's there. It doesn't mean we're spending it in the best way possible. So when I see that budgeted funds, I know there's gonna be any critical thinking, there's not gonna be any thought process, there's just gonna be yay. So I, we just gotta do better about every penny we are spending. This city center, it's gotta happen, it's gonna cost a lot of money, but people are not gonna support you if they don't think you're doing the right thing with their tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other, uh, audience communication? Seeing none, I am going to jump into council announcements, if we have any.
Just say something quickly in reference to the, to the mention of our budget and budgeted funds. So a lot of these items, as they're noted as budgeted funds, every year we get huge council packets full of expenditure proposals for the year, what each department head would like us to purchase or invest in, and then what the finance director proposes that we support, and then, you know, there's debate and wiggle room, and, and she's not here tonight, but our finance director has implemented a new strategy for city budgeting to make it more effective and use our resources as wisely as possible. It's a green, yellow, red system. I don't remember exactly what it was called, my apologies, but I just wanted to state that, you know, it's not just something that we see today listed on a piece of paper, but it is something that we discuss months prior as well and go over, and there is a lot of thought that goes into it. And, and so I just wanted to offer that background. Our finance meetings are all available to the public, our finance budgets are also on public records that people can look through them as well, so just a little note on.
Well, Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Just add to that, to Councilwoman Bazinski's, when you're, when you work in the city, which I did as a treasurer, you have to prepare a budget, and it's real painstaking, it really is, because most of the time you get turned out, and it's different things for your department, including the salaries and things like that. So in a way, you're kind of your own entrepreneur, and then that goes to a review. So those funds and those projects are reviewed at that level as well. And so it's not only our eyes, it's other people's eyes, you know, and not only the administration, it's other department heads and other people looking at those kinds of dollars that will be spent in that department or proposed. We dispose of the budget, they propose it, we dispose it. That's our job as legislative branch. So, you know, while some of it isn't, you know, just 100%, it's been looked at before too. And, and I think Mr. King's right, we do have to start tightening up on a few things, and we gotta, you know, we hire consultants a lot in this city, and are they all needed? I mean, you know, I begin to wonder that myself when we go through things, and that's wholly on another note, but we, we do gotta be cognizant of these dollars, because they're just not there, and everybody wants another dollar for this and another dollar for that. So, you know, we gotta be really careful as we proceed as watching those dollars, and, and we all gotta work together on it besides. So anyhow, just a word of Grandma's talking points. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll just add, our budget is publicly available on the website, so if you wanna see line by line what the city's budget is, you can go right to livoniabudget.org, I believe, or livonianfinance.org, and you can look at our proposed budgets and approved budget. Those meetings also, those budget meetings, those finance meetings chaired by Council Vice President Martha Tasnik are open to the public. But again, you can see very detailed of how much money each individual department will allocate for roads, for, for furniture, for, you know, police department, every department in this city, everything's very publicly available to the residents. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. All right. With that being said, I'm gonna jump right into our agenda with new business, starting with item number one is a reappointment of William Tansel to the Livonia Board of Review, Office of the Mayor, for a three-year term, and it'll expire on February 16th, 2028. Oh, there you are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jake Liberati, Assistant City Assessor, here for the reappointment of Bill Tansel. He's been a Livonia resident for 57 years, he's been on the board since 2010. Once he retired, he began volunteering and doing tax returns at the senior center, so he takes on all of our hardship exemptions, 'cause you have to go through taxes, so he's really important to the, to the board.
Yes, council.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Tansel's been around the block several times and does a great job for our city in many respects, and his wife was on the school board for many years as well, Pat, and as was said, they've lived in Livonia an awful long time, so they know the city. I mean, you know, they're of, so I would, I would put an approving on his reappointment as well.
For consent?
Yes, please.
And you hung out with us for an extra hour and a half, so we appreciate it.
Well, it was very interesting.
I bet. Well, again, we're so happy to have you, and right now, you can hang out with us on February 24th, but you're all but assured to get past.
Mr. President. Sir, is that true that you said you're gonna raise Councilman McCullough's taxes? Did I hear that correctly?
Listen, it's fine.
Well, it's under consideration.
Yeah, it's, it's totally cool. No, thank you so much again for.
I would like to say one thing.
Yes.
I think the city is really very lucky to have the quality of people it has in the assessor's department. Jacob is doing a great job, Linda Goslin, and all the people in that, and I've been very lucky to be part of it since 2010, and I've learned a lot, and hopefully have been able to help a little bit along the way.
Oh, for sure. 100%. And we're glad to have you through 2028. I'll see you at the next meeting, well, I won't be at that one, probably. I'll just be in the audience, just eating popcorn at that point. But no, thank you for your service and love to have you, you know, for an extended period of time, so keep it up.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any audience communications on Mr. Tansel? This one, you got two, for now.
I think you had five seconds left over.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, yes. And 70, 72 years, I don't agree with some of the statements that was just said, but I will ask this question, and be real quick, and I can bring this closer if you, if you need to, but required Board of Review training, okay? And that's a public, that's a public act, okay? Every two years, they have to go and renew that. So has that been done, and is that current with all three members?
We're getting a thumbs up.
Yep.
Well, I'll move away, and we can get it all on tape.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Yes. All right, moving.
Coming back.
Hold on.
Oh, we're getting clarification.
Coming back for vengeance.
Yes, they're all current.
There you go.
There we go. Appreciate it. All right. Any other audience communication? Uh, seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number two is a reappointment of Richard McDowell to the Livonia Board of Ethics, comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on March 1st, 2028.
Seems like I was just here.
Listen, I, you know.
That's what Todd says, weren't you just here last?
Having to hang out with you at the Rotary Club every Monday is enough for me, I don't know why I gotta deal with you right now, but that's fine.
Approving, Mr. Chair.
I'm kidding. No, I love this one.
Laura, former trustee at Schoolcraft moves to accept the appointment.
Let's see, Mr. Fisher's gonna introduce you, let's see how he does.
Go ahead.
So as you may know, the Ethics Board works closely with my department, and Mr. McDowell has been the chair for some time, and in fact has been, is a founding member of the Ethics Board for the city of Livonia. So we're quite pleased with his service. In the words of one of my colleagues, Livonia has only benefited from Mr. McDowell's service in this role and, and many others, but we, we're proud of that, and we'd hope to continue that.
Is that just because he's got his name on a building at Schoolcraft?
It's the only reason.
We don't even like the building that much.
Carrie's just going.
I spent time, my mom went to Schoolcraft, and, and it was new, and my sister and I went to classes with her, it was a great building, she loved it.
But do you wanna say?
We have all the supporters here, don't we?
Would you like to say anything for the good of the order?
No, the, early on, everybody was learning what the council established the ethics ordinance, and part of that was to establish the review board to make sure that we were upholding the ordinance. And so an education process went through initially, we sent out those forms, which you mumble and fill them out and get them back to us, and we're getting fewer and fewer that need to be reviewed, and they're really very minor things, and so everybody has learned how to correspond with the ethics ordinance correctly, and so our job, we went from meeting four times a year to meeting once a year, and so, and, and so we do a good job, we have good people on the board, and we're pleased to serve.
Oh, we're, we're happy to have you.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, Dr. McDowell, I'm gonna make you guys feel really young, I said on the board, we appointed Dr. McDowell to the presidency out at Schoolcraft College, and himself, and Conway came from Pennsylvania, and they've done a super job at that college. I was very honored to serve there for two terms, and almost two terms, I got roped into running for city council my second term, and, and I can't tell you, this community is a whole lot better 'cause of Dick McDowell, his wife, and his family, and, you know, and that includes the golf course as well. Dr. McDowell's an avid golfer.
You weren't supposed to mention that.
That's right, that's right, but he, he does a fantastic job for us, as Mr. Tansel does, but honestly, these guys are invaluable as time goes on, and we learn, we learn from you a great deal. Thank you.
We appreciate it, Laura, thank you.
Do we have a motion yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Laura, we'll move in on consent. Mr. McDowell, I consider you a friend, a mentor, and a fellow Rotarian. We are honored to have you part of the city in some facet, and love to, you know, have you part of the team, so thank you for hanging out with us, and you can hang out with us on February 24th, but you don't have to.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any audience communication on Mr. McDowell? All right, moving on. We're gonna move on to item number three is a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Livonia. It's come to us from Mr. Moore, and to be celebrated at the Livonia Early Childhood Center at 1-800-0-NUBERG. Mr. Moore?
Evening, council. Doug Moore with Department of Public Works. It's our annual Arbor Day program request, and Council President, you hit the nail on the head. We're gonna be at the Livonia Early Childhood Center, the brand-new building at 18,000 Newburgh Road, and we'll be there at 10:00 AM.
Do you still need me to wear the tree?
Yes, please.
I'll be there. I'm wearing the tree costume.
You've already heard the tree costume?
I'm gonna be part of it. Going green.
What kind are you?
I don't know yet.
Part one of those annoying logos.
Sycamore.
I love it.
I feel the love. With that being said, do we have any motions?
Put it, put on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Mr. Moore, this is always a great event, and I think, I think myself and Vice President will be there.
She cannot make it, she's already.
So I'm treeing and I'm singing.
I can, I can.
And Carrie's going to.
I'm in her seat today, so you guys were at need you last.
I will try, yes.
All right.
If I can get up, I'll get up there.
I need someone to, Rob needs to guide me around, so I don't fall on anything.
Hopefully he does.
With that being said, is there any audience communication on our Arbor Day? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number four is a request to approve Alliance of Rouge Communities, the ARC Annual Assessment for 2025, comes to us from the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $38,724 from budgeted funds.
This, this is our annual request for the Alliance of Rouge Communities, the ARC. ECT's the executive director, they, as part, as the executive director for the ARC, they're doing a lot of work for us that takes, would take our staff time, and they're also helping us meet our requirements for our MS4 permit with the state. So we're asking council to approve the $38,724 for the dues this year.
Mr. President.
Yep.
Mr. Moore, thanks for being here this evening. These dollars are all supported by grants and various organizations, right?
Yes, there's money, there will be a lot of money that comes back to the ARC that ECT finds for us.
Great, great. Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right, Mr. Moore, moving on to item number five is an award of bid. This comes to us from Building Maintenance for custodial supplies from budgeted funds.
This was bid on the Mitten website on January 7th, the bid closed on the 28th of January. We had 21 bidders respond to the RFQ. The custodial supervisor and the purchasing manager met on January 30th to whittle down everything. We, they got it down to three bidders that were selected who are gonna supply the items, and we're asking council to approve the list of material from the three bidders.
Council.
I, I had motioned for approving on consent.
We have a motion, anything else from council? Anything from the audience? I will just say, Mr. Moore, well done on purchasing for getting that many bidders, that's huge.
That one was, yes.
It's kinda scary, but. Item number six is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve vendors for equipment maintenance, comes to us from the Department of Public Works, to allow authorized vendors to perform equipment repairs in the amount not to exceed $400,000 from, for fiscal year 2025 from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
So in this, we've got a list of bidder, or a list of vendors that we work with on our equipment, from Alex and Dave's for vehicles, Bill Brown does work for us, the big equipment goes out to several bidders. On the good thing, we are interviewing for mechanics and are being a little successful. We have offers out to two people that are very interested, and we have another interview on Thursday, so we are hoping that this won't be needed to the full extent of the $400,000.
Awesome. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Moore, thanks for being here on this item. So essentially, we already have a garage with mechanics that work on a lot of equipment in the community, we've been having a hard time hiring over the last couple of years, right?
Correct.
So this essential offset, there's still work that needs to be done, so in lieu of the staff, which work really hard, Gary and Buzz and all those guys in there work very hard in the shop, and, and they've been around for a long time, but the work still needs to go on.
Yes.
Okay, and you feel pretty good about future potential mechanics?
Yes, for the first time in a long time, yes.
And what, you think there's any problems with pay? I mean, is there anything that the council can do to help out the garage and help out DPW? I know you and Don, and this has been a, a, an important issue for, for years now, so if there's anything council can do to help out, you know, we wanna be here.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent, if there's objections from my colleagues.
A way to approve it on consent, anything further from council? Anything from the audience? All right. We are gonna move on to item number seven is request for authorization to purchase one 2025 Case Backhoe Model 580 SN through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, comes to us from the Department of Public Works, to be used by the Roads Department from budgeted funds.
So the last item tonight is a backhoe, it's being purchased with the Sourcewell program, saving us 28% over retail price. The vendor is Southeastern Equipment, it will come in with a claw, a leaf claw on it, and one of the oldest ones that's caught, the repair costs are exceeding its value, will be shipped off to auction. The issue is, our water department used to purchase backhoes, and the old, it would pass on to the, the oldest one would pass to the roads that still had life in it, they're now using excavators, so the roads department is having to buy the backhoes for the leaf program, and other assorted things they do.
All right. Thank you. Council?
I had put a consent, an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent, anything further from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thank, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number eight is a request to approve the proposed 2025 Sidewalk Repair Program, comes to us from the Engineering Division, to include approximately 554 locations throughout the city. Mr. Zalinsik, you're kind of early in the order, but I just looked at the backside, so we got a party going on.
Exactly. As you know, construction season's right around the corner in April, so we're just trying to get things lined up, and your assistance for approval. As you're aware, yes, our guys are out in the middle of winter doing sidewalk reviews. We have 554 locations to be done in 2025. Last year was just over a million dollars worth of repairs, so looking for your approval to do an SAD, this is the first step in the process, that we allowed to signify that if people call the assessor's office, whatever, that they'll be put on notice, that there's a, gonna be assessment on this property, they'll get the right to do it themselves, or have the city's contractor in a later date do the work. So appreciate your help in approving this, moving it forward so then we can do the repairs.
Thank you. Council?
Ms. Chair. Approving on consent.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to note that Mr. Joe Rotundo and Rotundo Construction, they do phenomenal job on those sidewalks, so always get excited about them coming through and fixing our sidewalks in the community, they've been around a long time. I think I saw one of those sidewalk stamps, where they stamp when they replace it, like from the 1800s. I think Joe Rotundo himself stamped that in the concrete.
Big Joe did that?
I think, I think Mr. Big Joe was out there stamping himself in the early days, yeah.
They got vampire.
Yeah. I just hope that they can get out there real fast, you know, let's get these sidewalks repaired quickly, so thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item number nine is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 Asphalt Road Program by extending the contract 24-a unit prices with Nagel Paving Company, comes to us from the Engineering Department, in the amount of $4,275,775.10.
Thank you, Council President. As you're aware, we had OHM advisor, Mark Locke, help us prepare the bidding documents for this project, whatever. We basically had a lot of street segments that weren't completed last year deferred for this year, over in the south end of town, north of Joy Road, east of Hicks, that we wanna get done, probably about $2 million worth of work over there on Houghton, Norfolk, things of that nature. So we're asking for your approval to have 17 asphalt segment streets completed as part of the annual road repair program, any amount, like you say, to just under 4.3 million, and look to have Nagel start that work hopefully in April, early May, if weather permitting, and obviously complete it in the fall, again, getting these street segments done with our road millage that we've done for this program. Thank you.
Council?
Mr. President, Mr. Zalinsik, I know in the packet it talks about a total of $9.5 million is budgeted for the 2025 Asphalt Repair Program, but we're only approving 4.3 of it right now, or?
What, 9.5 of, 4.5 for the concrete, 4.3 for asphalt, $8,000 and some change for the maintenance program, so there's a pot of money, but then I had to take, as you, you you guys approved late last fall, MDOT's $700,000 for Ann Arbor Road Project. So there's a pot of money, about 10.2, but some of that had to be allocated towards the Ann Arbor Project. So we left with 9.5 total.
And O H M will work with like the Pacer rating and kind of determine what roads we replace and whatnot.
We work hand in hand. They've been instrumental since the inception in 2002. Mark Locke's been at O H M probably over 30 years now. He probably knows that office better than we do as far as daily, daily assistance with us throughout the years of this, this program. So appreciate all their efforts. And obviously, they do a great job of helping us make sure our road repairs are done quickly to our standards and hopefully last a long time as, as we want to get the best use out of the tax dollars.
Yeah, it's nice that we renewed that millage because Livonia is so fortunate that we replace our city roads. A lot of cities don't have that and/or they have to wait maybe on the county, which it's, it's kind of difficult. O H M does phenomenal work and makes sure that process is, is done right. And then Nagel, I mean, they're, they're a family owned company and they're local and they do a lot of great work in our community. And that engineering department holds them all accountable. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
All right. Council? Any issues? Audience? Seeing none. Moving on to item number 11 is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 Concrete Road Program by extending the contract 20, oh wait, did I skip one?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I did. I got ahead of it. Sorry. Request to amend the contract with O H M advisors for the construction engineering services for the 2025 Asphalt Road Program. Comes to us from the Engineering Division.
Again, thank you, Council President. This allows O H M advisors to do the construction engineering portion of this project based on the contract amount that you put on consent agenda. Mark Locke and his team goes out with Mike McNutt, Nasser, Nasser, to facilitate these reviews and hold the contractor to our specifications. It's again, we're looking for their approval in the amount of $513,093. Again, they may not use all of it, but it's based on our QBS contract that we've had in place through 2026. Again, Mark Locke's in the audience, does a phenomenal job over the last, like I said, 20, 20 some years here to help this program continue to be a success and maintaining our 373 miles throughout the city.
Oh, approving.
We have an approving consent?
Consent.
Anything else?
Yes, please.
Council, any thoughts?
Thoughts?
Audience? All right. We have an approving on consent. Moving on officially to item number 11 is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 Concrete Road Program by extending the contract 24-C unit prices with Hard Rock Concrete. This comes to us from the Engineering Division in the amount of $4,538,170.86. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, we have 16 concrete, I'm sorry, 18 concrete street segments this year. Unfortunately, we did have to remove three, one which is Bobridge, east of Merriman to Sunset. That's a first priority for 2026. The second one was on Leon, just west of, west of West Chicago. And the third one was another location on Gulfview, which would require additional 40 trees to be taken down. So that segment will be again, looking at as a priority from Gulfview, Clarita down to Curtis in section eight. So those three unfortunately had to be cut because of the budget constraints that we had. But we do look forward to doing the remaining portions of street segments for 2025. Again, Hard Rock Concrete has done a great job for us the last several years. He takes pride in his equipment, his personnel. And if you, recently, last year they did Sunnydale off of Levan Road. There was a handicapped child out there. They built a ramp specifically for that person, for that family, to make sure that that person got on the bus when necessary. So they go in above and beyond. I've even, even seen their workers and AEW workers help out veterans that need to get to a car or to get their doctor's appointment. So they go above and beyond. They take pride in the work. They do a great job for the community. We're asking for your approval in the amount for that contract and, and the amount of $4,538,170.86.
Council, Council Madonovic?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I agree with everything Mr. Zalinsik just noted, just said. And I'd like to note that Mr. Girmaldi is here, the owner of Hard Rock Concrete. Livonia is very fortunate that we have a core group of vendors who consistently perform and perform at the highest levels. And Mr. Girmaldi is definitely one of those people. To share a personal note, when they were redoing portions of my street on Garvet, 7 o'clock in the morning, there's this owner running around, you know, staying on top of the job site. And I appreciate that as a family business owner like Councilman Toy, it's not easy running a family business. And we're lucky again to have just a, a big group of core vendors in our community that, that do just outstanding work. And Hard Rock does that. They actually took down a demoed house that we worked on last year over on Seven Mile. We worked hard on that. And that was a big topic in this community. And Mr. Girmaldi's company tore that down for the community. So I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Council, anything further?
No, that's what Italians do.
There we go.
I just couldn't tell them.
Anything from the audience?
I got to say that, no, 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 that's, that's not to jump on that. But when I, when I worked for the city back in 2000, I was, I, I had Rocco out there on my butt. All right? And he, but you know, you guys did great work always. And so it's just crazy after that many years. Those are the great work we continue to get. So keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item number 12 is a request to amend the contract with AEW for construction engineering services for the 2025 Concrete Road Program. And this comes to us from the Engineering Division. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, we have AEW handling our concrete programs since 2008. We have Scott Lockwood, who's the Vice President from AEW in the audience. We also have his counterpart, Ross Wilberding, in the audience, whatever. He's been instrumental again in these road programs every year to make sure that we're on time, under budget, if necessary. Of course, I add things on to make sure that we get those other things done if necessary. But we're asking for your approval for this, this project based on their, again, contract amount for AEW. If any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council? Yes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
They do an outstanding job, but I also want to compliment Mr. Zalinsik because he's good and at working with a lot of these vendors and making sure that, you know, the train goes on time. So kudos to Mr. Zalinsik as well as our vendors and our people that help us look good in the city. Appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to note, unfortunately, the Vice President, when the city plays hockey games, the Vice President decides to be a traitor and play for the Red Wings as opposed to Livonia. So if you remember correctly, Mr. President, I don't know if we should take that into consideration here, but he left our team.
No, he did. He did. But what, you know?
He made up for that Ross guy, though. His partner.
Ross. Ross. And, and you know what? For what it's worth, he go, he did want to play this year. I just said, we've got 5,000 people and two teams. And he goes, I'm just going to let my back rest. And we'll get them next year. But if you decide to go to the Red Wings, I, all bets are off after that.
Yeah, I agree. Maybe we should have proven this time.
Yeah, yeah. In all seriousness, too, you guys are great partners in the community. You know, I think we say that each and every year, and it, it sounds like a broken record, but we've got some of the greatest help from all of the engineering, contracting, concrete. We're very fortunate. I, I'll be honest with you, you know, as a council member, when you start looking at it, and I'm just, I want to know what song that was. That's fun. No, but you know, when you start looking at bids, and this goes to any, you know, buddy watching at home, you know, our job is to make sure that, you know, we're being fiscally responsible. And I question it at times. I, I would. I'd be like, why can't we go back out to bid and we keep extending this? That's a testament because we've went through a pandemic with these prices being carried over.
That's right.
And in my field, you know, I, I share, you know, some knowledge to be able to speak the language that we're getting some really good deals out there. And I think that, you know, it's time to take moments and acknowledge that rather than try to run away from it. Because I think a lot of people always get, oh my gosh, we keep doing this. But I can promise you out there with all, you know, look at the numbers. Feel free. We get taken care of. The city's in a good spot and we've got great people around us. And again, it's a testament to what you do, Mr. Zalinsik, and to everybody out there. Again, don't play with us next year. Well, there might be a different thing. No, I digress. But we do, we have an approving on consent, I believe?
I believe so.
Anything from the Council? Audience? Okay. I'm going to move on to item number 13 is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 Sidewalk and Pavement Replacement Program by extending the contract 24-F unit prices with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions. Comes to us from the Engineering Division in an amount of $300,000 from budgeted funds.
Again, as, as you know, we have water main breaks throughout the season. Typically from October to, to March, we get those locations. We go out, we identify them. And then we do a phase one locations by, by July 4th, end of June, get those completed for residents, whether it's a driveway, asphalt parking lot, anything that may have been occurred over that timeframe. Again, phase two goes through the summertime. We come in, try to get done before mid-October for lease season starts. Halloween's there. And then we just go ahead and repeat the system itself. But again, we got to make sure we take care of our residents. They've had a hole that may be full of gravel. Areas that need to be restored with the restoration and sprinklers. Great Lakes has done it the last couple of years. They know the routine. They work well with our inspectors. Again, we anticipate next year going out for bids for this. We have new city council. But again, I appreciate the Council President and the members of city council taking advantage of the best prices we can get now. Again, you know, things change. We'll go out for bids again in 2026 for sure.
Oh, good.
And redo the process and hopefully extend it maybe one or two years depending on the, on the outcome of the economy. But again, without you, we can't do this work, make it, make it improvements out there and get the best price. Again, saving tax dollars again to do more work if necessary. But on average, it's been about 300 to 325,000 dollars depending on the water main breaks. And we've had a mild winter this year, luckily, not on wood.
You just did that. You just, you can't even, it's on the record.
Wednesday, less than four inches. Hopefully, we'll be all set. But appreciate.
It's like saying a shutout in a hockey game. What are you doing? Oh, well.
So with that, we're looking for approval for Great Lakes to come back in and do the repairs again for this year and 2025.
All right. Council?
An approving on consent.
We got an approving on consent. Any other questions, concerns? We're going to go to the audience. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. All right. We're going to move on to item number 14 is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 Concrete Road Maintenance and Selective Slab Program by extending the contract 24-J unit prices with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions. This comes to us from the Engineering Division in the amount of $844,000, $845,865.50.
Again, we typically go out through the year. We have a spreadsheet shown of locations where people have called in with concerns, whether it's a heaved pavement, drainage issue. Some, most cases, a lot of these trees have to be removed in order to facilitate proper drainage to where these complaints have come in through DPW and engineering. So we have 25 locations slated for this, of which I think each location, we have approximately 23 trees to be taken down, along with doing some work on Schoolcraft College, or Schoolcraft Road from Levan going westbound, then finishing up from where we left off last year on eastbound from Yale up to Farmington. Again, looking to do those repairs. The last time it was touched was back in 2014 when I-96 was reconstructed. We did a lot of work last year, as you know, from Newburgh in that vicinity because we have the M14 Sheldon Project going on. So we're trying to make sure that when people get on the expressway, those areas are safe on the service drive and work our way east further to Inkster throughout the course of doing repairs. And I'm also looking forward to trying to get some federal funds for a portion of Schoolcraft from Merriman to Melvin on the eastbound side. So again, with your approval, looking for Great Lakes to do the repairs and continue on the great work that they do.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
I'll offer an approving on consent to Mr. Zalinsik's point. They've been doing work in our community for a while now and this continuation of that at reasonable rates.
Good. Any comments from Council? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item number 15 is a request to amend the contract with AEW for the construction engineering services for the 2025 Concrete Road Maintenance and Selective Slab Program. Mr. Zalinsik, take it away.
Again, this will allow AEW to do the CE, construction engineering testing with the concrete density testing. They have G2 typically as their subcontractor to come out and do the controls, make sure that the concrete's not sitting too long. It's to our standards, to our thickness, whatever. So with that, we're looking for approval in the amount of 105,733, again, based on the contract amount of the 845, 86550. Thank you.
Thank you. Council?
Approving. Consent?
Consent?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else from Council? Anything from the audience? All right. All right. Number 16, we did it. Is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and the City of Livonia. Comes to us from the Engineering Division for the Five Mile and Levan Intersection Traffic Safety Modernization with proposed city participation to be estimated at 50% in the amount of $76,120 from budgeted funds.
This one's a unique one. We want a partnership with Wayne County. I want to thank O H M advisors, Steve Loveland and Mark Locke for their efforts to get this grant money. Typically, an intersection to modernize is around $350,000. With the county's cooperation, Levan and Five Mile is under their jurisdiction. We'll split the difference of 76,120 each to get the signal upgraded. We'll have left turn phasing on east and westbound Five Mile Road in the future, if necessary, for south or northbound. We can add that. But again, it'll finally clean up that intersection to allow people to stop cutting through there on the amber with one or two cars and maybe getting side swiped, whatever. So we'll hopefully make this intersection safer with the funds that we got from the Highway Safety Improvement Program and look to work partnership with Wayne County and then invoice them as necessary based on helping us with the design cost, construction engineering, and then construction cost. So with that, we are, we excited to do that. We're also working on Linden and Newburgh Road to upgrade that signal, too. There was an accident, the accident several years ago, but looking to upgrade that signal also. That's with city money itself.
Awesome. Council, yes?
Question, Mr. Zalinsik. So we'll be spending the city out of our own budget 55,000? Is that correct or?
76,120 from the city and 76,120 from the, from the county. But we just got to bill them. Typically, the IGA comes from them. This is unique in which we drafted the IGA. They, they agreed to it. It'll go to the Wayne County Commission for approval. And then we just got to make sure we work with the Finance Department to bill them for the effort based on the funding that we received from the HSIP funding from MDOT.
But the total construction cost for the traffic signal is estimated about $350,000 or?
That's, yeah, construction for the signal. But once you add the final amount, it's 469,992. That's what the construction engineering cost and with, with the other, other ancillary costs that go with that. So.
For all the millions of people watching, a traffic signal costs about $400,000?
Yeah, you know, 350 to construct it, but all this construction engineering and the inspection that goes with that all in is going to be 469.
That's a lot of money for.
Design. That, that includes design and that, that includes everything all in for that signal itself. Not cheap.
Wow. I don't want to offer the proving for that. Let someone else do it.
I'll offer an approving on consent. I think, as somebody who travels that and often has to do the yellow light left turn, I think it'll be welcomed, hopefully anyway.
We also upgraded Joy Merriman, working for the county recently, if you were down at Fickell High School.
I live, that's where I live. Yeah, so I do as well.
Took us several years, but thank with the O H M team to get that done. Andy Sherwood, O H M, did a great job. And again, it helps make it safe for those kids going to school that are making that left turn, especially in Westland, less accidents for everybody.
100%.
Absolutely.
All right. We've been approving on consent. Any comments from the audience based on that? Seeing none. So that concludes our study agenda. I will now go back to the audience for any items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none. Council?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Good night, Livonia.